Welcome back, everyone. It's now after lunch. We are resuming with the hearing. I have been told that this session will be a closed session, and only the following categories of persons may remain seated. That is, officials of Uber, as well as their economic and legal representatives, staff of the Competition Commission, members of the media, and any other person that Uber has no objection, that such person could remain present. I'm told that their representatives, their legal representatives of Taxify as well. But Mr. Dingli will indicate whether he has any objections to their presence. Oh, maybe let me repeat what I've just said. Excuse me. This session will be a closed session, as requested by Uber. It won't be streamed live. There will be delayed streaming of the session. However, the session will be recorded. And I've been told that only the following categories of persons may be present at the hearing. Firstly, representatives of Uber, as well as officials of Uber, the staff of the Competition Commission. And I understand that there are also representatives of, or officials of Taxify who are present. And the legal representatives of Uber will indicate whether or not they have any objections to their presence. I also understand that members of the media are also allowed to be present as per the arrangements that have been made between Uber and the Commission. Mr. Dingli?
Thank you, Chair. Just by way of introduction, just to say that on behalf of Uber, we really do appreciate the opportunity to make our oral submissions to you and to participate in these proceedings. As you also indicated, yes, if there is any confidential information that we are required to disclose pursuant to any questions from any of the evidence leaders or the panel, then we will indicate that to you. But we can say upfront that in respect of our presentation that we're going to make today, that there is nothing confidential in that presentation. And we have no objection to Taxify being present during that presentation. I'd also just like to say, Chair, and just by way of introduction, that in terms of the statement of issues, we will be addressing three main themes in our submissions. The first issue that we'll be addressing is the transformation issue, more specifically, the impact that Uber has made on transformation in respect of the public transport value chain. And we will also be indicating to you some public benefits that we believe Uber has contributed towards the sector. We will then be moving into dealing with some specifics around dynamic pricing, area restrictions, and supply caps, which also emanates from your revised statement of issues. And then finally, we'll be dealing with the amendments to the National Land Transport Act. The individuals that we've identified to speak to these various issues, firstly, on my right is Jonathan Ayesh. Jonathan is Head of Operations for Uber for Sub-Saharan Africa, and he will be addressing you on those transformation issues, as I said. We then have to his right, James Hodge, who's very well-known to you. He's a director and an economist at Genesis. And he's going to be dealing with the pricing issues, as well as the area restrictions. And then finally, well, then not finally, then we have Greg McCurdy. Greg is also a director at Uber, and he's in charge of competition law globally. And, you know, Greg has, just to give you some background, he's been the Chair of IBA Anti-Trust Committee. Fifteen years at Microsoft and managed many of those anti-trust, anti-trust litigation against Microsoft. And he's been with Uber for approximately three years. We then have, and should I say also in respect of Jonathan, Jonathan has been with Uber since its inception, since it entered into South Africa in 2013. And then Michael Evans, who's a partner at Webber Wensel, one of my colleagues. He has been intricately involved in the submissions on behalf of Uber in respect of the National Land Transport Act. And he will take you through that section. So in terms of process, as I said, Jonathan is going to start, followed by James, and then Greg will come up. And then finally, you know, Mike will come up and end off the session on the amendments to the act. We do appreciate that you may have some questions. We would really like it if you could ask the questions to the relevant individuals that are dealing with that section. And then perhaps if there are questions outside, outside what we've submitted, for example, that are more general in nature, that we hold those over till the end, just so that we can get through everything that we feel it's necessary to say. Yeah, so without further ado, and if you are comfortable with that process, I'd like Jonathan to start. And he'll effectively be speaking to the slides that are up on the board.
Just before we start, Mr. Dingli, if you could indicate in terms of how you intend to rationalize or to ration the time? Because after your submission, we also have to take a submission from Taxify, which is also going to be an equally comprehensive and detailed submission.
Thank you, Chair. We've tried to stick to your hour and a half. So everyone has very strict instructions around how long they can speak to each slide. And so we will try and fit in with the hour and a half. Hopefully, Taxify won't object if we take a few extra minutes, maybe of their time. But we'll certainly try and stick to the hour and a half that you've provided to us.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ayesh, before you proceed, there is a piece of paper in front of you. If you could take the oath or the affirmation as you please.
I, Jonathan Ayesh, solemnly affirm that the evidence that I shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. So help me God, there's a "so help me God" part that you didn't read.
There are two.
Oh, you took the affirmation. Oh, I beg your pardon. Sorry, sorry.
That's okay.
I beg your pardon. Just before you go into your presentation, if you could just very, very briefly explain what your current role is within Uber and how long have you held your current role or position?
So I currently look after the operations in Sub-Saharan Africa. And that includes South Africa, obviously. I previously was the General Manager in South Africa. I've been with Uber for five years, since we launched in 2013.
You can go ahead with your presentation.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon. I know that you've got the slides in front of you, and in the interest of time, I won't be going through everything in huge amounts of detail. I will try and touch on the key points. And if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. So looking at transformation in public interest, Uber was launched in South Africa in 2013. And since then, we have created economic opportunities for over 12,000 driver partners. We've drawn this from the broad labor market, which includes existing meter taxi operators, professional drivers, and many, many individuals who have been previously unemployed. Something that distinguishes South Africa is that many of these opportunities are full-time equivalent, self-employment opportunities, and not just supplementary income. Youth unemployment is obviously something that's very problematic in South Africa. And it's promising to see that over half of the driver partners that operate on Uber in South Africa are under the age of 34. Another important thing, another important part of this opportunity is that is the flexibility that it offers, which we know from our driver partners is something that they value very highly. The next three slides are showing the growth in demand for Uber, the first one being in Johannesburg. So the image on your left will show the demand for a specific window in 2014, and the same window in 2018. So what you can see is obviously huge amounts of growth. This next slide is, this is Durban. And I think there is another one that should show, this is Cape Town. So what you can see is, and I know it's not incredibly clear, at least on that one, is just how widespread the growth has been, and not just in one area, but across the metropolitan areas. In addition to having direct economic benefit to the driver partners that operate on Uber, there's been other inputs that Uber has had on the value chain. So one thing that we realized very early on is the difficulty many of our driver partners have in obtaining finance to purchase their own vehicle. And we've partnered with many financial institutions to enable driver partners who were previously excluded from this credit market to obtain vehicles. Currently, we have over 100 million rand invested from these partners in driver partners' vehicles across the country. In addition to that, we've been able to reduce the risk for financial institutions and encourage rental leasing and other types of ownership structures. And many of these options are available to predominantly black-owned enterprises, which is further enhanced transformation in the country. We also have a very, very strong rewards program. One example of the rewards that partner drivers have access to is a fuel rewards card. We've partnered with a business called Zamlin Investments. And drivers can swipe their rewards card at any service station and earn points towards fuel, which reduces their costs. And Zamlin is also BEE1, Level 1 Enterprise. This is just one example of the rewards that we offer. Next slide. According to the UN, the main critical, one of the main critical rights that women are deprived of is the right to mobility. And I'm proud to say that the sharing economy has provided accessibility for women riders and drivers in terms of making it more cost-effective, making it safer, and increasing flexibility. 67% of female drivers that operate on the platform indicate that the flexibility that the platform offers is one of the key attractions for them. Whereas 51% of women riders cite the fact that they are able to see the driver's details as being the main reason, one of the main benefits. Uber's technology has brought efficiency to a market, allowing our partners, the operators, to charge lower rates, which thereby increases demand, but at the same time ensures that they are able to have sustainable businesses. We've also been able to expand our service, in particular, to underserved areas. On the left, you'll see Guguletu and Mitchell's Plain in Cape Town. And you can see the demand that is generated there. And on the right-hand side, you can see Soueto and Katlachong. Providing, a study by Harvard found that access to reliable transportation is the single biggest factor in determining whether someone can escape poverty. Providing transport opportunities for riders in areas which previously there were none is something that is very important to us. And many Uber drivers actually live in these areas. And so it also helps them operate and grow their businesses in the areas in which they live and avoid having to travel long distances to generate business. Our service is also very complementary to existing public transport. Uber is part of the public transport framework and makes existing public transport more accessible. We help integrate all modes of transport and are a key to the first and last mile option, making it viable for people to use public transport rather than their own private vehicles. We also work very closely with cities and regulators and have made our data available to them through our free Uber Movement website. This allows transport planners to use almost real-time data to make key decisions that they need to in their everyday work. Another benefit that we can offer because of the density and efficiency of our network is providing next-level service for people who have disabilities or mobility issues. So we have a product called Uber Assist, which caters to these people. And it allows them to get a driver who has received additional training and upskilling in how to handle these situations, often in less than seven minutes. We're always looking to improve how we operate across the region and offering 24/7 service to almost 700,000 active riders in our country. And we offer the service, on average, in around 3 minutes and 20 seconds. Uber is not only good for locals. We see a hu, we've seen a huge growth in foreign tourists using the service. Approximately 7% of our trips in Cape Town are taken by foreigners. Rider and driver safety is something we take extremely seriously. And technology has enabled us to build safety into the service from beginning to end. Before a trip starts, we have ensured that we are doing everything possible to make sure that the service is safe. And this goes over and above what is regulatory, what is required by regulation. Before a trip starts, all drivers go through training, go through screening, and are required to provide us with a professional driver's permit. All vehicles have to go through a roadworthy test along with a vehicle inspection, which is conducted by DECR for us in South Africa. When you request a car as the rider, you're able to see who is coming to get you, a photo of the driver, the name of the driver, the license plate and color of the vehicle, as well as follow the journey of that vehicle on the map. For the driver, they are able to see the details of the rider as well. Another important point is that all communication is anonymized through the app between the rider and the driver. While on a trip, that is electronically recorded to ensure that riders and drivers always know that we have ensured trackability. Another feature that is very important to both riders and drivers is that they're able to share the trip with loved ones so that they're never alone. They're always able to, they can always be monitored by someone else. Once a trip ends, there is a two-way rating system. And this helps us monitor the quality of the service on an almost real-time, trip-by-trip basis. Riders and drivers have access to 24/7 customer support. Riders have access, a new feature, riders have access to an emergency callback service if they do feel unsafe after a trip. All rides are insured. So we have over and above the benefits of the Road Accident Fund, taking out insurance for all riders on trips. And we've got partnerships with private security and law enforcement. We're always looking at ways where we can make the, where we can use technology to improve the safety of our offering. If we can go back one slide. So, for example, we've been, we do, we do a lot of work listening to our driver partners and understanding the difficulties that they have. And a lot of these features that we've rolled out, including rider verification, being able to share their trip, and a new panic button app that we've partnered with an external company to provide, come from that feedback. On the next slide, I'm not sure what's going on with the slides. But on the left, we, one of the amazing features we're able to offer is facial recognition. So we're always, we always want to make sure that the person driving the car in real-time is the person who is registered on our system. So we can check that through the facial recognition on the phone. We are able to monitor phone handling so we can see if someone is moving the phone around when they shouldn't be. We're able to notify drivers of speed thresholds and ensure that they're obeying the law. And we've also ensured that driving infractions are recorded. And we share that feedback with drivers so that they can always continue to improve their driving while using Uber. One more slide forward. I don't know if you can see it. It's the, it's it's the one keeping riders and drivers safe by avoiding drowsy driving. Chair, I don't know if you've got that. So I'll speak to it, I'll speak to it anyway. So one of the latest features that we've rolled out is what we call Driving Hour Limits. We are trying to ensure that drivers using the Uber app do not drive for so long that they are, that they reach a level of fatigue and then, which results in unsafe driving. This is possible because of technology. So once a driver reaches 12 hours of use, the app turns them off for a six-hour period. That's the end of my section.
All right, I'll begin with the affirmation as well. I, James Hodge, solemnly affirm that the evidence I shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So in the revised statement of issues, the terms of reference number three of relevance to taxis raises a question of what is the rationale for surge pricing by app-based taxi services and whether such practices do not harm commuters by charging higher fares? So that's the issue I'm going to talk to. I think before going into the detail of why, in fact, this pricing benefits consumers rather than harms them, I think it's important just to address some misconceptions about dynamic pricing or surge pricing, however you may wish to term it. So the first issue is, is that, in fact, this accounts for a very small minority of trips on Uber. So for this year, it accounts for less than 5% of all trips on Uber. And the average multiple at which prices go up during these periods of dynamic pricing is only 1.6x. And I think that's important to also note that is off the low fare base of Uber. So as the original submission indicated, research done by CRED had demonstrated that, in fact, the metered taxi prices were often 2, 2.5 times that of Uber. And although they've come down in response to competition, they're still at the high end of Uber pricing. So they still, in any event, offer value relative to others. I think the second element is that the fare is entirely transparent. So there may be older versions of the dynamic pricing when Uber started, where it wasn't always clear upfront. But as of now, it's entirely clear the exact amount you will pay, including that surge element, before accepting the trip. So there's none of the scope for the kind of price gouging that was typical, in some respects, of customers being captured at a late hour and being forced to pay a higher price that might have prevailed with other taxi services. That's certainly not the case with an Uber service. I think the other element to highlight, Claire Ellis, is dynamic pricing is, in fact, common in transport, and not just transport, vast amounts of the economy. So if you want to fly Safair in a week's time to Durban from Johannesburg, you will pay more in peak periods than in off-peak periods. And that's standard for airlines. It's not just fly Safair. And part of the reason for that is, in fact, that they're trying to manage variations in demand with fixed supply capacity and trying to signal to passengers that are, in fact, not time-sensitive to take a flight at a different time and allow those that are time-sensitive, usually business travelers, to pay and get on the flight that they need to get on. But it's not just airlines, it's also the Khaal train. Khaal train, in fact, has three periods. It has an ultra-peak period, which operates from 6:30 in the morning till 7:30, a classic commuting time. It has a peak period from 6:00 to 8:30 and from 3:30 in the afternoon to 6:00, and then an off-peak. And if you go into that, you obviously can't read it off the screen, it's too small. But typically, the peak period is about 25% higher than off-peak. And in fact, on the bus network, for rail, uses its four times the price. But this is, again, standard. They need to get more trains, more staff, out at inconvenient times. And those trains and staff are not operating in between when the service runs at less frequency. And that's a cost they need to bear. And hence, the costs are higher to operate that sort of capacity in peak. So the challenge in transport markets, and this is going to be bus services, minibus taxis, rail services, and e-hailing is no different, is that you have large variations in demand over the course of a day and also in the course of a week. So you'll typically have your commute times going into work and out of work. And that'll include also going to school and coming back from school. But you'll have that during the weekdays and a drop-off in demand at the weekend. For e-hailing, I suppose, the kind of peaks also include the kind of work commutes. But it also includes times when public transport isn't functioning or functioning with low frequency, and there are large volumes of people to move. So this may be at entertainment locations on the weekend or things like stadiums for football matches or concerts and the like. So if we look at Johannesburg and the variation in trips over the course of an average week, you can see exactly this sort of pattern. Obviously, very low demand in the middle of the night starts to pick up for the morning commute around 6:00 AM, drops off after the morning commute, picks up in the afternoon to the evening commute. And that's your sort of weekday cycle. But you hit the weekend, you've got a big spikes in demand, let's call it that, around evening entertainment on Friday and Saturday nights. But I think the main point here is there are substantial variations in demand for transport. And those have to be managed, and have to be managed somehow. And that's really where dynamic pricing comes in. So if we looked, and I apologize, as an economist, I might put a few graphs up in front of you, and you're welcome to roll your eyes and ignore it for now. But if you look at this sort of classic situation, you've got the morning and evening commute. So your demand, which is that squiggly line, goes up in the morning, drops off during the day, and rises again in the evening. If you have a fixed supply, and let's take taxis in this case, over the whole period, then there are clearly, during the morning and evening commutes, there's more demand. So the line graph is above the sort of bar of little yellow taxis. There's more demand than there is supply, which obviously means that people are just going to have to wait a lot longer to get a ride. But then also, in the middle of the day, there's a lot more supply, so a lot more taxis available, and not much demand. So drivers are sitting completely idle. And that is also inefficient because it means that drivers are on shift with a vehicle, not doing rides. Their utilization is low, they're not earning, which means they have to make up for that time and lost earnings in the peak time, which pushes up fares in general. And that's the problem, or one of the problems, with a mismatch in this supply and demand. Just to give you some flavor, now, this may be from New York, and, but I'm sure you can picture a very similar situation across the cities in South Africa as people queue for minibus, taxis, or buses exactly at commute times, having to wait considerable amount of time. And if we look at the flip side, which is that time when no one is traveling, a lot of drivers simply sitting idle. And again, I think if one goes to any of the taxi ranks at the off-peak time, there's a lot of washing cars and fixing engines that there's a lot of washing cars and fixing engines that, that goes on. Now, I suppose this is when I will excuse everyone from, from, from paying too much attention to the economist. But, but in fact, this can be presented in the very simplest-
We do have economists as well.
So the economist can stop and listen and the legal minds can, can check their phone messages at this point. But the very simplest supply and demand graph that you get in first year economics can in fact explain all of this. So in your normal period, which is your top graph, you have supply and demand. And at a particular fare level, let's call it, they're in balance. So those looking for rides are matched by the number of, of taxis that are available to provide rides. And so everyone gets a ride within a few minutes. And that's what certainly Uber and others are trying to achieve. If you look at the bottom graph, what happens when you get a surge in demand? So people come out of a stadium or people come out of their office and want to get home is in economic terms, we represent it by shifting the demand curve, an outward shift. And if price doesn't adjust, supply remains constant. It's exactly that picture I showed you a few slides ago of the flat supply, which means that we get a, what we call excess demand. So at that fare level, there's a lot more people, Q3 in this example versus Q1, that want to lift and are willing to pay that fare to get a ride. They're actually willing to pay, but they're not getting serviced. And maybe in the transport example, that just means they wait. They wait until the other ride has finished and the, the taxis come back to fetch them. But that is a cost to consumers. It may not be in price, but in fact it's a huge cost to consumers in terms of, of the value they get from transport. So in the original submission, in fact, what was interesting is there was a study done, and I think it was quoted in a Mail and Guardian article, which said, if you look at the true cost to commute in South Africa, you know, for low income earners, it's probably about 30 to 40%. And the reason for that is although in monetary terms it makes up about 12%, the amount of time commuting, the long commutes in South Africa in effect means that what you earn for a day is spread out not over eight hours, but possibly over nine, 10, 11 hours. And so your effective wage is really a lot lower. So people value having convenience. Also, the statistics say National Household Travel Survey, and that was also referenced in the original submission, but you can go look at it. If you look at what people say is the most important factor in choosing a travel mode, the top is in fact travel time. That's over 33%. Further down the line, at 26% is affordability. And this Uber survey done by Ipsos for Uber in April last year confirms that. If you look at what are the top 10 things people, active riders say about what they value in Uber, yes, number one is safety, but very close behind is the fact that it's available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So it's availability. Number six is you get a car within minutes because there's thousands of drivers available. And number eight is you can work around your schedule because a car arrives in minutes. Affordability is down there at number seven. People value convenience. And that's an important thing to understand with transport networks. It's not just about the price, it's about the availability and service. Because no one wants to sit for a long time waiting for a, a ride. Claire Ellis? We can actually demonstrate this and economists would call this a natural experiment. So this is a case, New York, New Year's Eve, probably peak time for, for people who don't want to be driving their own car because they've had a few too many. And the dynamic pricing on Uber failed for 26 minutes. So for 26 minutes, they couldn't use dynamic pricing. So the first graph shows that the number of requests peaked. So they're going from under 50 per minute or so up to over 200, quadrupling in requests. That's a massive surge in demand. But because drivers didn't respond, because they weren't incentivized to get out and get there because it's an inconvenient time for them. And unless they're being paid more, they'd rather be at home with their feet up. So because of that, the expected time of arrival quadrupled. And those were for the people who are lucky enough to get a ride because the last graphic is the completion rate. So prior to this point, everyone who opened their app and requested a ride got a ride. That dropped to 25% during this period. So that's the illustration of the real cost of not having supply adapt to demand. People wait longer and many of them don't get a lift. So how does one cope with this peaks in demand? I mean, this panel will hear from all different transport modes through, through the course of its hearings and its investigation. But very often with mass public transport, you do it, as I said, with the Khaal train. You put on more and more trains that sit idle for the rest of the day and employ staff to man those trains in the peak times. And that's costly. And that raises the overall costs of the service. And you do charge for it as a Khaal train does in peak times, or you may not, and spread that cost over raising the price across the entire day. With e-hailing, you've got an additional challenge. You can't just invest in more and more because in fact there are driver partners you don't, you don't directly control and which you have to incentivize to get out and service the market. So they decide when and where they wish to, to operate. But this flexibility actually provides somewhat of an, an advantage as well. So Uber's able to deal with quite a lot of the demand fluctuations. A large part because you can see by the low incidence of, of dynamic pricing, under 5% of trips. But you also saw how the demand for, for Uber varied over that day and week in Johannesburg quite substantially. But drivers are incentivized to come out already at periods where there is more demand because it means they will get more lifts in an hour, which means they can earn well while they're operating. And so it's a natural economic incentive for them to go to places of utilization. But in addition, Uber helps the drivers in that regard by directing them already to period, to, to places of high demand and times of high demand. And also warns them of upcoming events in the city in which they operate where there might be expected crowds forming at particular points in time. And this is outside of dynamic pricing. So this is the ordinary course, normal standard pricing. And the result is that, well, you saw for over 95% of rides, there's no dynamic pricing. This slide just shows you one of the, the sort of incidents where Uber informs their driver about where things are going to be busy or very busy and in which suburbs and where to head to. And it gets more granular than that as well. And on their, their website under the rider section, you've also got the events for the week, which drivers can go and identify and see. You know, so if there's a Soweto Derby, maybe, you know, people need to, to think about getting to FNB Stadium around the right time and they will get a high demand for lifts. So dynamic pricing is a tool, but it's a tool for those rare major spikes in demand or at times when drivers, most drivers would rather not be operating, like at midnight in Bramfentaine. So, so it is the exception, not the rule. But it's an important tool in that exception. So for that small amount of, of times, what does it do? And I am going to return to that wretched supply and demand graph next, but let me just quickly explain it in lay terms. It has two effects. It slightly reduces demand. So by pushing up price, the price signal says to people, much like in the airline case, who are not time sensitive, they can relax for another half an hour or hour, happy to do so, have friends around. They will choose to in fact delay their trip. Or they may take an alternative form of transport that's available to them. So that slightly reduces demand, which helps. The second factor is of course at a higher price, driver partners are incentivized to come out in larger numbers or move from areas where there's less demand to areas where there's more demand. And this is exactly a price signal, this is the market at work, that, that pulls them there, which means supply increases. So demand slightly increases and supply increases. And that enables you to return to an equilibrium where anyone who wants a ride gets it within their few minutes, as you saw Jonathan put up, with a low wait time. And in fact, it ultimately means fares return to normal much quicker than they would otherwise. So we've seen how those queues can perpetuate for quite a while in, in the city around the commute times. Well, when you increase supply and address that, that queue goes quicker, which means you return to normal operations. And again, supply and demand from first you can, can demonstrate that. So your two effects, if the price is allowed to go up in response to that shift in demand, then it means some people on the demand curve, who in fact don't value getting a ride quickly, drop off. So your demand drops from that Q3 to Q2 in terms of, of the graphic. But also because drivers are getting paid more per, per ride, they in fact expand supply and that's a movement up the supply curve from Q1 to Q2. So supply and demand then converge again at Q2. More people are served than they were beforehand because before, without the, the dynamic pricing, only Q1 customers got served. So more people got served and they get served with low wait times. And as we saw before, people value that, consumers value that. And that's also reflected in your demand curve because people will only pay that if they are willing to. And as you saw, the transparency of the pricing means that in an Uber case, you have to agree to it upfront before you get in the car and, and accept the ride. So people have that willingness to pay. I mean, one can add a layer on top of this of sort of welfare, consumer and producer welfare, but I, I won't do that now. There are also another, a number of other deeper benefits to, to dynamic pricing, which may be interesting to note as economists, but also as a competition authority that has almost a consumer welfare standard overall in its assessment. So the one is in fact price signals sort customers. I mentioned that with airlines, price signals are important in saying for leisure travelers who in fact can arrive at the beach a few hours later and, and get up at a more leisurely pace when they want to leave, it pushes them into the off-peak period and creates some demand in that, that for, for, for airlines. But it means that business people who have to get down to Cape Town for a meeting and get back to their families in the evening do get a flight. They're willing to pay more for that convenience and as a result, they get the flight. The alternative, if it's just a queuing in a bun fight, then people who don't value getting there on time may end up first in the queue and getting on that ride. Whereas those that desperately value it are left stranded and unable to, to do business. So that's an important element, it sorts customers. I think the other element is really about increasing utilization. You're moving drivers from areas of low demand where they may do one trip an hour or something into areas where suddenly they can do two, three trips in an hour and relieve that congestion. That high utilization, as the, the sort of submission laid, laid, made clear, is what ultimately supports low prices in the system. Because drivers need to earn a certain amount. You can either do that through a few trips at a very high price or lots of trips at a low price. So effective utilization means that overall prices are lower. So, so one may focus a bit on the multiple at the point in surge, but one's also got to think about how that all affects the base price to begin with. And as utilization improves, as wait times come down, people get familiar that this is a service they can rely on, demand expands for it. And that's that virtuous circle that was covered in the initial submission about generating demand on the rider side, which supports more drivers, which makes riders come on board as well. And overall keeps prices low. Maybe just a last few things on, on, on dynamic pricing that, that I think also maybe some of the perceptions about Uber and dynamic pricing are historic. The technology has continually improved and Uber works hard to improve it for the reasons I'll come to. Because in a sense, they're incentivized to keep prices low, that's their business model. And surge can interfere with that. So whereas it maybe started off as demand doesn't match supply in the entire Swanee area, it is now down to very small localized areas which are represented by little hexagonals. And so it can be incredibly focused on very specific areas at very specific times and not have a, a broader effect. And that's in part why, why dynamic pricing is less than 5% of, of all rides. Also, the later versions have predictive elements. So, you know, one of the, the delays in responding to a, a spike in demand is getting drivers to that area with a predictive element. Drivers are made aware that this is imminent and they can get across to those areas and address that surge in demand quicker. And prices can return to normal levels much faster. From the driver's side, what they tend to see when they open their app are again these smaller hexagonals with, with a sort of heat map of where there's more demand and less demand. And, and some of that heat may, may not even be a surge or dynamic pricing multiple. It may just be areas of demand. But also Uber communicates with the drivers in the instances where they're not seeing sufficient response. So those who are offline at the moment, not operating, SMSing them to say there is periods of high demand, you may want to get out there because you have lots of earnings opportunities. So I think just rounding off on, on dynamic pricing, I think the important thing to understand is, and this is evident from the developments in the technology and the revealed evidence of the low incidence of dynamic pricing is Uber has every incentive to in fact limit this. Because its entire model is built on low prices generate high utilization. And that high utilization means that drivers can earn a decent income through being more efficient, through having more trips per hour relative to, to other forms of transport. And the whole technology is built around that. The matching technology and dynamic pricing is one of those pieces of the puzzle. Because if the norm was high prices, well, then we'd see a much smaller market, much lower demand. And in effect, Uber or other e-hailing would be shooting themselves in the foot. And this is a sort of adverse or vicious cycle dynamic of higher prices tend to reduce demand, which means, you know, you need to put prices up even higher because you're not getting the lifts that you're, you're required. So to keep the virtuous cycle of lower prices, bring in more demand, which enables high utilization and achieving your earnings is, is important. So, I mean, from my perspective, given the incidence of, of dynamic pricing, this is probably not a big matter for the commission. And given its, its incidence of, of sort of peak pricing across the transport industry, is, it's also, I think, to single out e-hailing may, may be unnecessary. But it's also, to the last slide, a warning against regulation and fair regulation. So the problem with fair regulation is we precisely have that flat supply graph that we saw in one of the earlier slides. Because if I get no better price when I'm sitting up at midnight in my car cold, in my Bramfentaine example, versus sitting in the middle of the day and then can spend the evening with my family, why get out there? So supply doesn't adjust to demand at the, the periods of peak. But the mixture of the flexibility model that Uber has with dynamic pricing means one can actually address those peaks. And that, just to return, that one of that first graphics you could see of the differences in demand over the course of the day. And the fact that most of those can be accommodated without any dynamic pricing suggests this flexible model is in fact far more efficient. Because it's using capacity where it should be used. As I mentioned, a lot of mass public transport just throws money at capacity. But that cost has to be borne ultimately by consumers because they have to pay for the extra buses on the road throughout the, the peak times that sit idle outside of that. And that's where I suppose there's another element to it. It's probably more effective at keeping fares at a standard level and addressing some- and addressing some of the gaps in the public transport system that Jonathan referred to. So it does see peaks in demand at the commute times where it's supplementing your, either your private car usage or your first and last mile on your public transport system. So that's with dynamic pricing. I'm then going to start off talking about the second statement of issue that's relevant to taxis in Terms of Reference One, where the question is asked, is the regulatory framework between traditional metered taxis and app-based services in terms of area restrictions different? And if so, identify the differences and the impact thereof on competition. I said I'm going to start. I suppose the short answer is that they're not different. But I just want to deal with more why in fact area restrictions are inefficient. And rather than something that should be given consideration around, you know, regulating area restrictions and making sure that area restrictions are fairly applied, they in fact should be scrapped altogether. I'll then hand over to Greg McCurdy, who has in fact just flown in from an ongoing OECD meeting and working group around precisely the regulation of metered taxis and app-based services, where the commissioner was also present. And he can provide feedback on the latest thinking from the OECD staff paper on this and also the countries, the OECD countries that provide papers on that. And then to Michael Evans, who'll talk about the actual regulations, which is certainly not my area as that's legal. So I think the simple answer to the question that the commission has asked in its Terms of Reference is in fact, the e-hailing operators are granted metered taxi operating licenses in terms of section 66 of the NLTA. And in fact, no distinction is drawn in terms of the area of operation type conditions. And these vary across the country as how they're applied. So very often, an area of operation is stipulated. This might be a municipal boundary, but it might in fact even be a provincial boundary or even national. Cape Town has a radius of operation. For many, it's from City Hall, a 35-kilometer radius. But it can also be from the place of residence of the operator. But it's been noted for a long time, and I think the source hidden at the bottom of this slide cites a paper almost 10 years ago. Metered taxi operators have been permitted to roam within their designated areas and do street hailing from, well, whenever the legislation was put in place. That has never been restricted. They're never been restricted to operating out of ranks. And they've never been restricted to just taking phone bookings and then going on demand. They've always been permitted to roam. In fact, the anecdotal evidence in the commission is in a better position to get actual evidence on this through the course of its investigation. But the anecdotal evidence from former metered taxi drivers is in fact that often there are restrictions by the associations that go beyond what's in the license. That maybe associations will control certain ranks and drivers from other associations will be denied access to that ranks. But these are self-imposed. They're not regulatory imposed. And I think the commission has already heard some evidence, at least in terms of the fare setting as well, to that effect. So if we look at area restrictions though in general, and why I'm covering this is because it is relevant to the commission's question, but also the commission's role in terms of advocacy and findings in terms of this inquiry. Because as you've already made, been made aware, the NLTA is under the process of amendment. And from the Terms of Reference, it seems that the commission is interested in recommendations on how that should be done and maybe what position the commission should take on that. So I've talked about, I suppose at length already, the efficiency model underlying the e-hailing approach, which is, in fact, you could call it the high road or virtuous cycle of getting higher levels of driver and vehicle utilization. By getting high utilization, you're able to sustain low prices while still giving drivers a decent earnings. And that is achieved through minimizing, let's say, wasted time. So while you have a rider in the car paying a fare, that is utilization on active sort of operating or fare-paying trips. Outside of that, if you're sitting idle, well, you're not earning something, but your car is still a fixed cost, your time is a fixed cost. And then you've got the time getting to the next trip. And of course, then there's also costs of getting to the next trip, driving a distance if it's far. So if you've had to go to the airport and have to return empty, that's a substantial cost if you're coming from the center of town. And the e-hailing applications achieve this by the real-time matching technology. As soon as you drop someone off, they're looking to find a nearby rider, which limits your time, first of all, in finding another ride, but also your distance to get there. And so your idle time and your fuel costs and other costs of getting to the ride. So you're eliminating that idle and pure cost and not fare-generating time through the matching technology. Dynamic pricing, I've already talked about, gets people to areas where there's demand so they can have frequent lifts. But ultimately, it's about achieving these economies of density. Many riders and many drivers on both sides of the market out there looking for rides. So if a rider knows that Uber is reliable and can get a ride within five minutes, then they may use it. And that provides a demand support for many drivers out there. And when they drop someone off, they can find a ride very quickly if there's high levels of demand. So what area restrictions do is they in fact undermine all of these efficiencies. So the net result can only be to increase fares in the long run, or in the short run in fact. So what do area restrictions typically do? They might not prevent you from taking a rider to a destination outside your area because you've picked them up in your area. But they frequently prevent you coming back with a passenger because that would involve a pickup outside your area. Or picking up a passenger outside your area and taking it to a third area because that would also be. So depending on how they're crafted, they may have different restrictions. But it's inefficient because ultimately, you put some of those in. As I mentioned the example, someone takes from here, drops someone at our tempo and has to return empty because that's in a different municipality and they don't have a license to do that. And so fares must be high. You're going to want to recover, in fact, the return journey that's empty. That's a lot of petrol and time that's unutilized. So your trip to make it profitable out there must be at a higher fare. Whereas if you're bringing someone back, you can say, well, in fact, you know, I don't need to recover that in the fare going there. Their fare can be lower because I'm getting a fare back. The alternative is it undermines good service. So the typical complaint previously of the taxi industry was that someone sees where you're going and says, well, either you pay me more or I'm not giving you a lift because I know that's inconvenient to me. And that can't happen under Uber, but certainly couldn't happen under area restrictions. I mean, we've had the dynamic pricing example too. Area restrictions would prevent dynamic pricing. You have a peak in demand. Use my example, it's at the Sueto Derby, was I saw the other night when Barcelona played Sundown. It's a massive stream of people coming from Swanee down, obviously to support their team. But those are two different municipalities. If taxis are to meet that demand and that peak demand around there, then they're not going to be able to do it. So you've got a peak demand in another municipality. It can't be assisted in being relieved from taxis in other areas. And I think it's detrimental, it's not just to an e-hailing, it's detrimental to metered taxis too. And that's clear. So you know, that's why it should be scrapped and not sort of adjusted to cope with different examples. Let me just round off with a couple of slides. So one is just a simple illustration. Now, this is again what we would call a natural experiment-type example. But San Diego Airport says that vehicles that don't meet certain emission standards, so of gas guzzlers, to use that sort of term, are not allowed into the holding pen for taxis at the airport. So if you drop a passenger off, you're not allowed in the holding pen to pick one up and come back with a passenger. So that operates effectively like an area restriction. You can go there, but you can't come back. And the top line shows that in 99 point whatever percent of the times, those non-compliant vehicles come back empty. That's exactly the wasted trip and the fares in effect have to support that. But those who are complying can get into the holding pens and pick up a passenger. So that's akin to not having an area restriction. And there, yes, not everyone returns with a ride, but close to 40% do, which supports lower prices overall. Maybe a quick note that if you look at the rationale often around regulation, area restrictions go hand in hand with supply caps. And that's why we're raising them in this context. And that's because supply caps are typically there under the false pretense of preventing oversaturation, too many drivers in a particular area. And area restrictions are seen to almost reinforce that cap by not allowing drivers from outside the area to come in and saturate that area with drivers. So that's why in a sense, similar and go hand in hand. Look, Greg is going to cover this in more detail. So all I need to say at this stage is, as an economist, he's a typically protectionist when you try to impose supply caps and typically allow those who have the privilege of getting a license to charge more off a poorer service. And that certainly is all the economic evidence on these sort of measures. But it sets in motion that negative, that vicious circle I talked about, that by having higher prices, there's limited demand for the service, which means in fact it reinforces the need for a cap. But that's a different business model. It's the old business model. The new business model, which Uber has shown, Jonathan has shown, has massively expanded demand, says, let's look at a virtuous circle. Let's go low prices, high utilization, which in fact stimulates demand. And then we can employ 12,000 instead of a fraction of that and create opportunities that benefit consumers and benefit drivers ultimately.
Mr. Hodge, sorry to interrupt you. By supply caps, are you referring to operational permits?
Yes, exactly. So not only having a permit, but limiting, actively limiting the number of permits. So people may apply and we'll say, no, actually, in, you know, the Cape Town area, we think we only need a thousand. But often those demand models, I think you've already heard, are not only broken at the municipal level, but they're often premised on a different business model, an historical business model. And that I think is the main point I'm trying to get across. And in the main, the previous submission of Uber, there was some reference to local research around metered taxi industry. And one, which was by former chief director of public transport at DOT, when sort of bemoaning the taxi metered taxi predicament of high prices and limited demand, said, "The key almost certainly lies in the density of taxis per square kilometer. Once a taxi service reached a certain density, drivers will take the opportunity to look for customers away from ranks and users will become accustomed to them being available to hail on the street." That's saying there's a latent demand out there. If we change the mindset and look at street hailing as a kind of model which app-based services are able to do, then there is demand out there, there's latent demand which can be satisfied by greater number of drivers, which means consumers have a better public transport, but also there's more economic opportunities. And that study also cited a more recent 2014 study of, in the Etiqueni municipality, where they surveyed in township areas. And the general perception was that metered taxis were safer than minibus taxis, but the lack of availability and higher fares put people off from using them. But that again suggests there is latent demand. And I suppose some of those early graphs that Jonathan put up about how in fact, demand has expanded in low-income areas in these metropoles precisely reinforces that, that Uber has demonstrated what academics and Department of Transport people recognized a long time ago, that get out there, be available at low fares, and there'll be a virtuous circle that reiterates. So this last slide is just showing the growth in demand. I think if anything, Jonathan's done a more effective job of that through those graphics. But really, a survey showed that most of the people using Uber, and this was a number of years ago, so it's probably even more the case now, over half never used a metered taxi previously. And of those that did use a metered taxi, 85% never even used it frequently. So there's been a massive, at this time, which was probably around 2016 already, a three-times expansion in demand was estimated. And that's then three times as many jobs as well. But at this point, let me hand over to Greg to talk about the OECD panel which he's just come from.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Greg McCurdy, Director of Global Competition Law at Uber. I solemnly affirm that the evidence that I shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So you may wonder, why is somebody coming from Uber headquarters in San Francisco to spend time with you? And I hope I can add some perspective as somebody who's been practicing antitrust law for the last two decades and including a long time at Microsoft and been very involved in the international antitrust conferences, where I know your organization is also very active in the ICN and the OECD. And as was mentioned, I was just in Paris for the OECD Competition Week, which started out with a four-hour hearing on taxi and ride-sharing regulation and its impact on competition. And as you know, your agency also submitted a paper, but agencies from around the world have submitted papers in which they have described their experiences in this area, how they have viewed taxi and ride-sharing regulations and how that impacts consumers on pricing and riders and drivers. And one of the things that was just handed to you is a collection of advocacy papers that these agencies have produced and published over the years. It might be useful for you to review at some point when you have a little more time. But there's been a lot of them. The agencies have been active in this area going back to the 1980s. The United States Federal Trade Commission back in the 80s launched litigation and investigations against taxi companies in the United States for monopolization. And including, of course, because they were highly regulated at the local level, things like supply caps, which were deemed anti-competitive. But even more recently, as you know, 10, 15 years ago, before Uber and other ride-sharing companies like TaxiFy came along, these agencies have been very active in investigating and advocating for liberalization and greater competition. If we can go to the next slide, please. So you know, there are a couple kinds of supply caps. There's the de facto ones and the de jure ones. De jure is when the law says there can only be X hundred or X thousand licenses. And those obviously can be very restrictive of competition. But then there's also the de facto ones. Some of the ones which I know we see here in South Africa in certain jurisdictions, municipalities, where the licenses are applied for but just never processed. They're never issued for whatever reason the administration is unable or unwilling to process them. So that it can be a de facto restriction which has the same impact. Clearly, the OECD staff paper, which surveyed the submissions from many of the member countries, and they've really summarized in a nice way. And this is a paper going back to 2007, so again, before Uber and TaxiFy came around. They said that the restriction in the number of taxis is a welfare-reducing regulatory intervention. Limiting the number of licenses is not economically justified and is an undue restriction on competition. They also noted that this can lead to very high license values when they can be transferred freely on the market and that that represents large monopoly rents that accrue to the benefit of the licensed owners, not to the drivers, of course. But of course, these monopoly rents and those values are supported by the increased prices paid by consumers for rides. It also, of course, leads to lower supply, higher wait times. And of course, on the driver's side, many fewer work opportunities for them. Go to the next slide, please. So the area restrictions, as Michael mentioned previously, are a form of a supply cap because they limit drivers to operate in certain areas. So they cannot be added to the supply in another area where it might be needed. And as you know, given the daily commute patterns or football events or whatnot, the demand for transportation varies a lot over time during the day, during the week, from area to area. during the week, from area to area. So in order to efficiently address all this, that kind of flexibility is very important. And the antitrust agencies around the world have recognized that. And in particular, they've also addressed some of the justifications traditionally given for area restrictions. And I'll go through these one by one now, if you can go to the next one, please. One of the justifications that has been given traditionally is that, oh, if in different areas and municipalities, we need to restrict the taxis here so that they don't all go to the most profitable areas. Such as in New York City, they might all want to operate in Manhattan rather than going to Brooklyn or the Bronx. And, you know, but the antitrust agencies have very much found that these restrictions are not required in this day and age with modern technology and business models and that, given the highly variable nature of demand, e-hailing services are in fact much better to be able to balance supply and demand and get those cars where they're needed, as James mentioned, using things like dynamic pricing. And, you know, Jonathan and his operations team obviously communicate to drivers about where they are recommended to go, where they can best address the kinds of needs that we know arise on a regular basis. The other area is where these area restrictions can be very harmful is in efforts to provide more transportation services to poorer areas. And there, what we found is that frequently taxis don't want to go there because they're afraid they might not get a ride back. There's not that kind of business, so they might not want to leave the business district downtown and go to an outlying area. But with ride hailing services, we can address that. And the OECD paper that was just published, I think, two weeks ago and was presented at the meeting on Monday, which your commissioner attended, you know, made the point that e-hailing services are very good at directing supply to those areas that need it a lot. Then another justification given is the quality of service that taxis need to be able to provide. I guess this is, yeah. The, in order to have better quality, they need the protection against competition of an area restriction. And the OECD, in surveying the member agencies, has clearly concluded that supply caps and area restrictions do not help increase quality. And in fact, I think in many, many countries and cities, one would say that taxi quality has been rather negative. Despite all the heavy regulation, their quality is not as responsive to consumer demands and they're not as responsive to complaints as companies like Uber or Taxify, which are able to do that. Go to the next one. Congestion is sometimes mentioned as a reason why we need area restrictions. And that's again, the notion that, oh, everybody, all the taxis in New York would go to Manhattan and they would ignore the outlying areas. And there may have been similar arguments here. But again, the OECD and agencies around the world have found that those arguments are unjustified and that in fact, they cause higher wait times and more difficulties in obtaining rides. If you go to the last of my slides, sort of in conclusion, I think the precedents from the agencies around the world are very helpful and instructive in addressing the kinds of problems that your commission is looking into right now. And if I could just quote here, the traditional taxi operators have always been in favor of extending the current regulation to companies providing ride sourcing services. So they want us, new model, different business model, different technology, to have to operate under the old rules. However, this has not met with favor of the national competition agencies, which usually think of taxi services as over-regulated. And the emergence of new market players is often seen as an opportunity for reform, not for total deregulation. Of course, we acknowledge that regulation is necessary for consumer protection and safety and things like that. But it certainly is an opportunity for reform and we very much welcome, you know, your interest in this area. So I think that's it for my part. Thank you.
The whole truth and nothing but the truth. Chair, I've worked with Uber since their arrival in South Africa. And one of the first tasks I took on for Uber was to look at the regulatory regime in relation to e-hailing. And almost the first thing that we did for Uber, and that was in early 2014, was draft submissions to the Department of Transport, motivating a regulatory environment for e-hailing. So this is something that has been on the Uber agenda since their arrival in this country. And they have fully supported a regulatory regime that specifically addresses the needs of e-hailing. And I think that is important to say. Can I just ask, have you got a copy of the amendment bill in front of you at all? Or we could make one available.
No, I said I do have.
You've got. Okay, let's hand it out. We've got the bill and we've got the section sixty-six of the act. I think let's hand it out anyway. While that's happening, the status, the stage we're at at the moment in terms of the bill is that it has been passed by the National Assembly, as you know. Two days ago, it went to the Select Committee on Economic and Business Development. And it is now going to the provincial legislatures for consideration. So one of the requests from the Uber side is we realize that what you're dealing with as a commission is a huge amount of evidence and material that may require quite a lengthy period of time before you produce your final report. But on the issues that I'm going to canvas, the request from our side is that if you're with us on the proposals that we make in any way, that you consider generating an interim report or a preliminary report. I'm not sure what the language is. I'm not a competition lawyer. So that that can be made available to the legislative authorities and so that they can consider possible changes to this legislation before it is finally signed into law. We've got a very small window of opportunity. And we are really encouraging your assistance and your participation in that if you are with us on some of the things that we are raising today. Uber has had three concerns about the amendment bill. One of them doesn't relate to competition issues at all, and I'm not going to discuss it. But the two that impact on the work of this commission are the area restrictions, and you've had a lot of input on that, and the punitive provisions in the bill. And those are the two that I'm going to discuss. But again, I just want to make two general comments. The one is that there's broad support within Uber for the bill. So although they've got these two major concerns, there is support for the fact that they are now moving into scenario where they are going to be regulated, where e-hailing is going to be specifically regulated. And secondly, and it's an important point, I think, as well, Uber is not seeking any favorable treatment for e-hailing services when compared to meter taxi services. So almost everything that I say in terms of possible changes to the legislation, and particularly in relation to the area restriction issue, Uber would be completely comfortable if the same changes were made in relation to the meter taxi situation. So it's not, it's not a proposal aimed at scoring some sort of advantage. It has been mentioned already that Uber drivers apply for and are granted licenses as metered taxis. I think it was said yesterday on one of the submissions that that was done through a directive of the Department of Transport. That directive came from a decision of the Transport Appeal Tribunal, which I think you've got it, was attached to our original submission. I can explain the reasoning if you like, but I think with the limits of time, I probably won't, I shouldn't do that. But essentially, the Transport Appeal Tribunal confirmed, and it was binding on all the provincial regulatory entities, that Uber taxis did qualify for operating licenses as metered taxis. As I say, if you want me to explain it, I can. Now, what has happened with the new bill that you've got in front of you is that the section, the new section dealing with e-hailing, which is the new sixty-six, capital A, mirrors the section sixty-six, which deals with metered taxis. It's almost been a cut-and-paste exercise from the meter taxi section into the e-hailing section. And it falls exactly into the trap that's been spoken about by Greg and James in their earlier submissions, that in a sense, what the legislature has done is it's taken an outdated provision in relation to metered taxis and is now applying it to e-hailing. Instead, what they should have done is looked at a new provision in relation to e-hailing and then updated the meter taxi provisions to bring it in line and bring it into the 21st century. I don't want to go again through the logic on area restrictions because I think that has been fully covered by, particularly by James. But essentially, what Uber has proposed is a two-part solution, which will allow Uber and other e-hailing operators like Taxify and potentially also meter taxi operators to operate more freely. And the first proposal, which doesn't require any amendment to the bill, but would be, it would be helpful if it was supported by this commission, is the proposal that operating licenses should be issued by the provincial regulatory entities, even when that function is assigned to the municipalities. Now, as you know, the whole philosophical underpinning of the NLTA is that a huge amount needs to happen and be regulated at a municipal level. And that was the big shift when the NLTA came into force in 2009. What we are saying is that when it comes to e-hailing operators like Uber and Taxify, they should continue to receive their licenses from the prees, from the provincial regulatory entities. There's a provision in the bill, which we've quoted on our slide, the new section eighteen, brackets one, capital A, which provides for applications to be made to the prees where the services cross the boundary of a municipality. And exactly for the logic that was discussed earlier, we say that that's completely appropriate for e-hailing operators. Yeah. So just, so just coming to an example to illustrate the point. Under the section sixty-six at the moment and under the proposed new section sixty-six A to B, if I'm an Uber operator and I have a license entitling me to operate in the municipal area of Johannesburg, and I have a passenger that requests me to take them to the O.R. Tambo International Airport, I can do that. I'm allowed to do that. So I'll take the passenger and I'll drop that passenger at the airport. I then want to pick up another passenger at the airport. I can pick up another passenger at the airport if that passenger is coming back to Johannesburg. But I can't pick up a passenger at O.R. Tambo International Airport if that passenger wishes to go to Pretoria, which is outside my area, or down to Benoni, which is in Accoralenia, not in Johannesburg. I'd be breaking the law if I would do that. And that's the effect of the current restriction, which is in the act at the moment in section sixty-six for metered taxis and has been replicated in the new provision. And we say that that is a provision which fundamentally needs to be changed. And this is, it's exactly an issue which goes to the mandate of this commission. And we would request that you support us in the sorts of proposals we've made. We've looked at the section and tried to look at a minimalist change to the provision so that we're not asking the legislature or the NCOP or government to make major changes to what is there. So what the provision at the moment refers to is that the car can return to, the car can go out of its area, the vehicle can go out of its area. The wording is, "If the fare is pre-booked and the passengers will return to such area." And we have given you on this slide two possible proposals to address that. We say that it could work if we say, "The vehicle may pick up passengers outside of that area. If the trip is pre-booked, stop." That would then allow our Uber driver, who's at the O.R. Tambo International Area, to pick up a passenger and take them to Choney. Or an alternative option would be to say, "The vehicle may pick up passengers outside of that area if the trip is pre-booked and the vehicle will return to such area." In other words, we'll return to Johannesburg, but we add the words directly or indirectly. And that option of indirectly would then allow the vehicle to go back to Johannesburg ultimately, but to do so via Pretoria, via Benoni, via wherever, before it returns to Johannesburg. So they, on the face of it, are relatively small changes, but they are hugely significant in terms of the freedom of movement of Uber and other e-hailing vehicles. So that's the first issue where we would, we would look for support. The second issue is perhaps even a more controversial one, and that is the new punitive provision in the bill, which you will have seen in sixty-six, capital A, brackets seven and brackets eight. The punitive provision says that a company like Uber or a company like Taxify must disengage, must disconnect its driver partners if they don't have operating licenses. Now, the slide that you've got in front of you highlights some of the difficulties, which I think this commission is well aware of in relation to the licensing process. In Ettequeni, Durban, for example, we've had in place a moratorium since 2010 with no justification or market study, as we understand it. In Port Elizabeth, Nelson Mandela Bay, since the end of 2017, there's been a moratorium in place. The time period in Johannesburg for the issuing of operating licenses is approximately nine months, in terms of our experience. And in Cape Town, applications from 2016 are awaiting the city of Cape Town's support before the application can go to the P R E. Yeah, this, and these moratoria and these problems in relation to the licensing process relate not only to e-hailing operators, but also to metered taxis and in some cases, minibus taxis as well. And I must say, with this information, I'm relying on instructions that I have had from Uber. And the concern that Uber has with regard to this new provision, that it's obliged to disconnect, is a twofold connection. It feels that this provision is discriminatory because it is only e-hailing companies that are obliged to disconnect their operators and face a potential punitive sanction if their drivers do not have operating licenses. But the companies or associations that employ or contract with either metered taxis or minibus taxis have no similar potential sanction imposed on them if their drivers are driving without operating licenses. So it's a, it's a very heavy and onerous sanction which applies only to e-hailing companies. And then we say too, that this new offense that has been created is arguably irrational because you have a situation where the whole licensing system is not working properly. And we know that, and there's been evidence before this commission about that. So you have a licensing system that is not working properly throughout the country. And yet, we are being told to disconnect drivers that do not have operating licenses. That offense would be fine if, for example, the operating license system worked on a two-month basis and the prees were required to issue their licenses within a period of two months. And they had to do that within two months. Because then, these e-hailing companies could live with that. They could live with a two-month gap. But in a situation where you've got moratoria in place, where you've got slowness and ineptitude in place, that just doesn't work. So what we have said in relation to this punitive provision and what Uber would request is that either a proposal is made to delete the provision altogether. But if that is not acceptable to the commission and ultimately to the legislature, then a lot of pressure should be, should be put on government to delay the implementation of this provision for a period of up to five years, provided that during that five-year period, a huge amount of energy is put into improving the whole licensing system. And the new, the new bill, the section ninety-three A, does allow for provisions to be implemented on a staggered basis and to be delayed up to five years. And we feel as well that what would assist that process is if in terms of section twenty-one-two of the NLTA, the National Public Transport Regulator were to play the role that it's required to play by providing the guidance and the necessary support to the prees, to the municipalities, to the bodies involved in the licensing process to improve their systems. And if five years, if we had a five-year period in which the system was improved so that licenses can be allocated from start to finish on a two-month basis, well, then that provision is one that would be, would be manageable and could be lived with. Thank you. That's all from my side.
Chair, thank you very much. That is our, those are our formal submissions, as it were. And you'll see that we've managed to do that within one hour eighteen. So we've snuck in within the one and a half hours. But we're obviously now open to questions from the panel. But I would just appreciate if you could just give me some forewarning of the type of questions so that I can make sure that the right individual is alongside me to answer some of those questions if I can't answer them.
Yeah, thank you very much, gentlemen, for a very, very detailed presentation. I'm not sure, Mr. Dingle, whether we'll be able to forewarn you. But of course, I think, essence, when the question comes, you will be able to direct it accordingly. And I think to the extent that a question may require, or there's some confidentiality to it, you can provide an answer to that question at a later stage on a confidentiality. to it, you can provide an answer to that question at a later stage on a confidential basis.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, at this point, then I'll invite the evidence leaders to pose questions. Mr. Gobin.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much. And I think maybe just to start with the issue around moratoriums and operating licenses whilst you're still there, before you are evicted from your seat. I think, I just want to understand because I'm getting confused, and please clarify me here. Uber launches in 2013, right? And through your own submission, you then indicate that there's been a backlog since 2007 for, you know, for operating licenses, for, you know, being processed by the pree, and that backlog has been there since 2007. Through your own submission, you then indicate to us that there's been various arrangements with various governments and there's been a decision by the Transport Appeal Tribunal that allows, you know, Uber partner drivers to get meter taxi, you know, operating licenses. Now, what confuses me here is, and then you then say, well, there've been arrangements and Uber has been complying with legislation and all of those things. But at the same time, you're now saying, well, the system is not working. And you're now requesting that one of these proposed amendments that deals with the issue, you know, the one that deals with punitive measures where you now have to disconnect if, you know, if one of your driver partners does not have an operating license, it has to be, it should be delayed, you know, for five years. Now, what I'm more interested in is for Uber to explain, you know, what sort of regulation it wants because I'm getting confused. So if you launched in 2013 and the backlog has been since 2007, and you're saying that there's been an arrangement throughout for Uber to be getting operating licenses that are meter taxi-related operating licenses, what kind of operating, how have you been operating, you know, or how have you been getting, you know, these licenses as a result of the backlog? That is the confusion I have. So if you can just clarify that and then I'll move to the next section.
Yes, thank you. It's a very good question. It is an issue that's confronted not only, as you know, by Uber but by meter taxis and everybody else who's required to go through a licensing process. And it is the case that numerous Uber drivers, TaxiFire drivers, meter taxi drivers, and even minibus taxi drivers are driving without operating licenses at the moment. That is the reality, is the reality of the completely clogged-up nature of the system. Now, what Uber has done is it's made every effort to try and put pressure on the municipalities and the prees to process licenses as quickly as possible, but often without success. What it has also done is it's ensured that all of its drivers meet every single requirement for an operating license, even if they haven't got the operating licenses. So obviously, they all have PDPs, their professional driving permits, they all have insurance, they all meet all the other requirements, and even goes beyond some of the requirements in the NLTA in terms of what those drivers must fulfill. But it's a product of a system that is not working at the moment. And if I took the logic of this new punitive provision, and if Uber were required to disconnect all its drivers that currently do not have operating licenses, in reality, that could put Uber out of business, it could put TaxiFire out of business. Because the system is such at the moment that there are many drivers who aren't licensed, who are carrying passengers, they have insurance, they've gone through all the tests, they comply with the law in every single respect, but they do not have operating licenses because the system has just grown to a halt.
Maybe, you know, maybe just to...
Mr. Gobin, sorry, there's a follow-up question from...
I just want to get a sense of whether you know the proportion of drivers that still don't have operating licenses within Uber, because this is one of the things that has been raised quite a bit.
And maybe before you proceed, because that was going, you know, to be the next question, and maybe to rephrase the question and to ask the question differently. When the slides were projected, the ones that were dealing with the issue on transformation, no, 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 yes, I think it was on transformation, I think there was an indication at the beginning that currently there are 12,000 Uber partner drivers. So the question there is, of those 12,000 that you've mentioned, how many of those are operating with a meter taxi operating license?
Chair, can we give this evidence in camera?
Yeah, I think that's, that is okay. What I suggest that we do, colleague, let's, so that Mr. Evans does not have to move up and down. Let's deal and exhaust the regulatory issues and then we can then go to the next topic. Perhaps the next topic will be dynamic pricing, but let's just exhaust the regulatory issues.
Yeah, maybe, you know, just to follow up on the same, you know, theme. The question there is, if, for an example, you're now saying that the proposed punitive measures should be dealt away with. So the question that I have, the next question that I had there was, what measures do you propose should be put in place? You know, because there may be safety issues and, you know, I mean, we can't allow a situation where, you know, riders are transported by, you know, someone who does not have an operating license. So the question is, what are you proposing, you know, to deal with that issue?
The proposal that Uber made to the National Assembly Portfolio Committee, which wasn't accepted, was that the provision should require operating licenses to be processed from start to finish, assuming that all the required documentation is submitted within a two-month period. And that if it is not processed within a two-month period, then the driver is entitled to rely on the receipt they receive for submission of their licensing application until their license is processed. From Uber's perspective, if there's an efficient licensing system in place, then there's no difficulty with the punitive provision. But the punitive provision needs to be linked to an efficient licensing system, that's really what we're saying. And that's why I made that proposal about a five-year delay. It's an optimistic proposal, hopeful that government will be able to put in place an efficient licensing system within that five-year period. Because don't forget that there are still punitive provisions that apply to individual drivers. So an individual driver who's not got an operating license in terms of section 50 of the NLTA can firstly be prosecuted criminally for driving without an operating license, and secondly can have his or her vehicle impounded. So it's not as if there aren't sanctions currently which attach to those drivers when they are operating without a license. They are operating at a measure of some risk in terms of personal consequences for their action. They also all have gone through the very rigid Uber testing in terms of their competence, in terms of their safety issues, in terms of their insurance, their PDP and everything else. And as Jonathan said in his submission, there's very careful monitoring of the performance of drivers on a real-time basis so that if a driver is not driving safely and is being scored badly by their passengers, that is going to be picked up immediately by Uber. So there's almost a kind of self-regulation process in place by Uber that goes almost beyond the requirements of the operating license when Uber monitors its own Uber drivers.
I think maybe linked to the question of, and I hear you mention the, you know, the fact that the regulatory system is not efficient. And what I'm more interested in when you mentioned that is, I do understand that the process for getting a meter taxi license is completed in terms of, you know, that step where you now have to engage and get directives from the, you know, from the planning authority. It does not apply to meter taxis. Would that be a correct...
Sorry, to Uber taxis?
Sorry, it does not, yes.
No, it does, it does. So it happens differently, as I understand it, in Johannesburg and Cape Town. In Cape Town, you lodge an application with the pree, it then goes to the municipality that considers the application and considers even a business plan, if I understand it. Sorry, so in Cape Town, it goes to the municipality first, it gets considered and then gets handed over to the pree. And that will be the same for taxis and for meter taxis, for TaxiFire and for everybody else. In Johannesburg, it's the other way around, but in each case, it requires the municipality as planning authority to consider the application and requires the pree as a provincial regulatory entity to ultimately process the application.
If I may make a follow-up question on that. So the applications which are made by Uber for operating licenses will be the type of applications regulated by section 66. Now, an issue has been raised with us by the meter taxi industry that there appears to be a differential application of these requirements in section 66 in the sense that they are required as the meter taxi industry to have a meter installed in their vehicles, whereas that requirement doesn't apply to Uber. If you could comment on that. And they've also raised one additional requirement, which they say applies to them but also doesn't apply to Uber. And that relates to the requirement around the radius. The radius, yes.
Thanks, Chair. On the first issue, Uber vehicles are required to have meters. Because they are applying, what we affected, I argued for Uber in that case before the Transport Appeal Tribunal. And in many senses, what the T A T did was fit a bit of a square peg into a round hole. So it said that the legislation, I think rightly said that that legislation was wide enough to accommodate Uber within the meter taxi because the definition of meter taxi refers to secured by roaming, hailing, telephone, or otherwise. And Uber fell within the category of the otherwise. And the legislation in section 66 says you don't have to charge the passenger based on a meter. You can charge them on the basis of an agreed fare agreed in advance. And because the Uber fare is agreed in advance, we tick that box as well. But section 66 says you have to have a meter. And Uber vehicles and TaxiFire vehicles strictly are required to have meters, even though those meters are not used at all. It's an example of the square peg in the round hole situation. And if they are stopped by the authorities and they do not have a meter, they can be charged for that because it's an infringement of the law and of their licensing condition. On your second question relating to areas, that's the issue that was addressed earlier by James in his submission. There is no distinction. I've got in front of me my file there, I've got licenses issued to meter taxis and to Uber vehicles in three different municipalities, and the area provisions are identical in both. So my understanding is that there are times when the associations, the meter taxi associations, impose their own restrictions or impose rank restrictions on the meter taxis. But as I understand it, the law and the permit conditions do not draw that distinction. There are some distinctions between the permits given to Uber and the permits given to meter taxis, but that goes to provisions relating to the e-hailing. There's a definition of e-hailing in some of the conditions. There's a provision, for example, in some of the Uber permit conditions, that says they're not entitled to rank because ranking is seen as being specific to meter taxis. So yes, there are some differences, but I can't say that there's any favorable treatment by any of the prees of Uber or TaxiFire on the one hand and metered on the other. There are some distinguishing factors, but on the key issues, for example, in relation to area, there is equal treatment.
And perhaps before you, perhaps a further follow-up on the last point that you raised. And I think Mr. Hoag also raised this issue in his submission in respect of the, I think what Mr. Hoag called the self-imposed requirements in respect of ranking and associations. Santako has made a submission on behalf of the meter taxi industry, as well as the minibus taxi industry, that the current regulatory framework in the NLTA does not reflect how the taxi industry is currently structured. And they made the point that the taxi industry, even though this may not be manifest, it may not have been carried through in the legislative framework, but the taxi industry is currently structured in terms of local taxi associations, even though there isn't any legal recognition of these associations in the legislative framework. And they say that this is what lies at the heart of the problems that have arisen, not only in respect of minibus taxis in terms of routes, but also in respect of the difficulties as well as the flare-up of violence that has arisen in respect of the service that is provided by Uber as well as the services that are provided by them. Because in their case, in the case of the minibus taxi industry, the reality is that they operate within those associations. And those associations have all sorts of rules and there is, there appears to be a system of self-regulation in place, which may not be legally recognized, but that is the reality on the ground. Whereas that system of self-regulation obviously will not apply to Uber. So they say this is what actually is at the heart of the tension that we currently see between e-hailing services as well as the minibus, sorry, the meter taxi industry.
Yes, thanks, Chair. I mean, that really does, I think, endorse what we have been saying, that these restrictions to which they allude are not governmental restrictions or pre-restrictions but are self-imposed. I mean, they're probably a product of a system that is a very old system and is based on an old and outdated model where taxis operate through their associations within a limited area and maybe from a particular rank. We've been told that if a taxi operates from a rank in Kemp's Bay and that's its rank, if somebody whose rank is in the CBD in Cape Town goes to Kemp's Bay and sits there, they're going to be chased away. I can't really comment on that, I don't, you know, speak on behalf of the meter taxi associations, but to me, that is, it is in a sense, a reflection of a model that doesn't meet the requirements of our current economy, which Uber and TaxiFire and others have met, where people operate on a much wider scale and need to operate on a wider scale. If we were to have a similar situation applying to Uber and TaxiFire where they were having to operate within very limited areas, which are maybe self-imposed by the meter taxi associations, we wouldn't have e-hailing in this country. It couldn't operate in that, it couldn't operate in that way. And I think in some, you know, there are a lot of Uber drivers, a huge number of Uber drivers are meter taxi operators. And Uber has encouraged meter taxi operators to enlist with Uber. And it doesn't mean they have, they even stop doing their meter taxi, they can do both because they've got a meter taxi license, they can operate their meter taxi on a rank basis when they're doing their meter taxi work and they can do Uber work. Uber has also engaged in a lot of negotiations and discussions with associations for the meter taxi industry. So some of the issues you've experienced up here in Gauteng, we haven't experienced in Cape Town. And there has been a memorandum of understanding that governed the relationship between the meter taxis and Uber in the Cape area. It's attached again to our original submission. So I think we are in a scenario where you have an industry that is, in some senses, living in the past. It's almost what happened when the automobile came onto the scene in the early 20th century and the horse and cart industry just could not cope with this new innovation. And I think in some ways, we need to see a shift in terms of the whole... And I think in some ways, the, the, we, we need to see a, a shift in terms of the whole underlying approach to this area of public transport. Where even metered taxis start operating on a, on a wider scale basis and on a wider area and have the scope and aren't restricted by their own associations. So that they can play a, 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 a particular role. There is, there is a role for them. But they need to operate within a twenty first century mindset where there aren't the area restrictions which they have self-imposed. And I think government in a sense has been one step ahead of them because as I said, government hasn't been imposing those restrictions. As you've suggested it yourself, those are association restrictions that are often imposed.
Yeah, I, I do, I do hear you, Mr. Evans. I think you are absolutely correct. But the reality is that this is the current context. And it cannot be wished away. So the issue which we, we are grappling with is because this is the, I mean, we can't think away the context. We may think about how the, the market should be structured, but this is the reality that we have to deal with. So the situation is within the current realities because the meter taxi industry is saying that the problem is the non-legal recognition of the current structure. For as long as you have that non-legal recognition of the, the current reality or the current context, then you will run into the difficulties that we have encountered. So as long as that, that has not been attended to, it will haunt and dog. These difficulties will, will haunt the industry. So those are the frank reflections and debates that we need to, to have and concede.
Yes Chair, I mean, I think the sad reality is that until we have an efficient licensing system, we are going to have these sorts of, we are going to have these sorts of difficulties. Because we are going to have many, many drivers on the road who haven't got the operating licenses and that's going to cause this tension. I think it's going to help when the new bill comes into force, which I'm assuming will be next year. Because then the meter taxis will be able to see that there is specific provisions addressing e-hailing and legal obligations imposed by law specifically on e-hailing. And I think they will probably support a scenario where the two are separated. I think they've probably been uncomfortable with the fact that Uber and other vehicles have squeezed within the meter taxi scenario and then have operated on, 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 on more of an area wide basis. But Chair, I think it is a sad reality that, that while our licensing system is not working, it's a, it's a very disjunctive system as well. Where you're dealing at the provincial level and you're dealing at a municipal level. You're dealing with planning authorities which are ill-equipped. In one of the major municipalities, there's a single secretary who in her after-hours time is required to process these, these applications. And as planning authorities, it's the municipalities that play a bigger role really than the prees. The prees play, play, play the tick box role, but the real headspace is applied by the municipalities and they're not equipped to do that. So I think whatever one can be done to encourage a new system, and I would like to see this, this national public transport regulator, you know, it was established by the, by the Act in two thousand and nine formally, but it only came into existence in two thousand and sixteen. And that's the type of body that needs to be intervening and playing a role to try and improve the licensing system. So that we have all operators operating on a legal and lawful basis. That's, that's the endpoint that we want to get to.
I don't want to heart the questions. We had issues of hoarding yesterday. Mr. Govind, you may continue.
Thank you Chair. Chair, thank you. Mr. Evans, I, I, I think maybe on this, on the question of efficiency and the system, I think maybe just to, to be clear, I, I'm not saying that the system is efficient at all. What I'm trying to understand is that, you know, for someone who's worked with the system, you know, you, you, you've been there. What I'm trying to understand is, you know, we've heard through these proceedings that one of the reasons why the, you know, there's a backlog is because municipalities are not, you know, providing the pre, you know, with their directives. So the question that I had, and, and this is linked to the efficiency question, is is whether or not for the service, for the service that you provide, the reason for the backlog, you know, in terms of the applications that you've, you know, you've put, you've sent to the pre and, and you want them to be adjudicated. The question that I have is at adjudication level, where the pre now has to adjudicate, is it a requirement for the service, for your service? I'm not talking about minibus taxis, but I'm talking about meter taxis and, and e-hailing service. Is it a requirement for the pre to consider what the planning authorities are saying? That is the question I'm posing.
Yes, they are obliged to. The law, I think it's section, I haven't got, got it in front of me, I think section fifty five requires them to act on the recommendation of the planning, the, the planning authority. You see, again, the N L T A has been drafted, it refers to routes and it refers to areas and it refers to the quality and quantity. So it's again, it's been drafted within the framework, the meter taxi framework, where you look at quantity. And again, as James was saying, we need to shift away from that potentially. But it's been drafted in that way. And the pre, and that's why I said the pre's role is really a tick box role. The pre is there to say, is there a criminal record? Have you got a P D P? Have you ticked, have you got, have you got all the requirements? But it's the municipality that's required to look at the provision of transport in, in the entire area, to look at its integrated transport plan and to measure the need against the plan. And that's where often the logjam happens. Because the pre can't act until it gets a directive from the, the, there is a provision in the Act that says if the pre doesn't get a response within a certain period of time, it can assume that there's an approval. Like I'll, I can go to the section if you, if you wish me to. But the prees don't do that. They wait for the municipality to come with their recommendation. And I think that's where a lot of the, the problems arise.
Okay, I think just one or two, two follow up, follow up questions. I think you, there's quite a lot of evidence that was presented here around area restrictions. So I want to propose two questions. One, one of it is coming from your N L T amendments, where you are saying the responsibility of operating licenses should be, should remain with pre. Right? I, I think it's, it's, it sounds like a contradiction. We are complaining about the inefficiencies at pre. And at the same time, you want e-hailing services to continue to be regulated or approved by, by pre. I just want to get a perspective of, of why, why the M R A is a, if they get that designation or the assignment of that function, why couldn't they do a, 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 a better job? The second part of the question is, the planning authorities, as we understand, they are supposed to check whether there is demand for a specific service. Right? And, and what we, the evidence that has been presented here is that the law as it currently stands doesn't provide era restrictions. We are able to move around. And you know, meter taxis and e-hailing services are supposed to be able to move around. I'm just trying to link, how then can the planning authority be able to determine the need for a particular service in the current environment for them to make a proper recommendation to the pre in terms of availability of particular demand? I think that's, those are the two, my two first questions.
Thank you. On the first question about the, the pre being, being utilized, as I said in, in response to the quest, the earlier question, a lot of the logjam happens at the municipal, at the municipal level. And, and the, the planning authority stage of the process is where a lot of the logjam happens. I think it would simplify the process if it was, if it was processed through the, the prees. But the real reason for suggesting that is because the municipalities only have powers and jurisdiction over their municipal area. So if I'm in Cape Town and I apply for a, a, an operating license, that municipality, if it's the regulatory authority, can only give me a license to, to travel within my area and then on a limited basis to leave that area. But I might want a license that allows me to travel between Cape Town, Stellenbosch and Pall. And that's three different municipalities. And the, the city of Cape Town can't do, won't be able to do that, but the pre will be able to do that. Even more significantly in Kaoteng, where you've got almost adjoining municipalities of Kuraleni, Johannesburg and Chwaney. It would make more sense for the Kaoteng provincial regulatory entity to give an Uber operator a license and allow that vehicle then to move freely between the three municipalities. I'm sorry. Second question.
No, no, the second question was if the, if, if the pre offers this licensing and there is a role of the planning authority. And I think in terms of the Act, they need to determine whether there is a need for a particular service. So I was just asking if the pre offers is entitled to, as, as your proposals suggest, you know, provide, issue these licenses as opposed to the M R A, how is the planning authority going to be able to determine the demand so that they can make the recommendation?
That's a, a very good question. My sense of the N L T A is that it, it recommended the pre to allocate licenses on a multi-municipal basis. But didn't consider all the implications of that when it included that, when it included that, that, that provision. Because it's, the, the provinces at the moment probably do not have the resources to look at demand on a, on a wider basis. But I think the prees would have to start doing that then. They would, because they would then be looking at an application covering a multiple area. Chwaney, Kuraleni and Johannesburg, let's say for example. And they would then have to ensure that they have the expertise to consider those types of issues on a wider, provincial wide or multi-municipal basis. But they're not, at, at currently at the way the, the Act is worded, they're not planning authorities in terms of the Act. It's only the municipalities that are, are planning authorities.
Mr. Govind.
Sorry Chair, it's just the last, you know, the last point on my side on this regulatory issues. I think maybe Mr. Dingle, you can, I'm not sure if you have the N L T A in front of you because I just want to understand this because it's, it's, I'm not getting clarity here and I thought maybe we should just look at the legislation and then get a, a comment from Mr. Evans. If you look at section fifty five, and, and, and you would see there that on, on subsection one, it says before the pre or before the N P T R considers an application, right? And then under subsection two, what the planning authority is required to do is to indicate whether there's a need for the service on the route. Your service is not route-based. That was the question that I was, you know, that I was asking. So the question is whether or not the planning authority, when it advises the pre for purposes of adjudication, whether or not the planning authority has to, you know, do the same exercise that it does when it considers a route-based operating, you know, a license, operating licenses.
Yes, it does. So the, the section is worded whether there's a need for the service on the route or routes or in the area or areas. And so they, they look at it whether it's a route-based application such as meter, such as minibus taxis or whether it's an, an area-based system. The one, there, there are problems with the legislation and, and when it gets to questions of quality and quantity later on in the Act, they refer only to routes, not to, to areas. But in terms of the provision that you refer to, that's both area and, and route-based.
Yeah, I, I think maybe that is where the confusion emanated. Thank you for clarifying the point.
Ms. Nandomban?
The, the question I have is in relation to operating licenses that have not been approved and whether there are specific reasons for those, if any.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer in a moment to, to Jonathan. I know in Cape Town where, where I am based, there's not been a single application that has been refused when it's, when it's been fully completed. Yeah, when it's been, so, and there have been challenges, there have been objections. I think at one stage by, the, the objections have stopped, but during twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, we dealt with, I think it was around about a hundred and eighty objections. And every single one was approved despite the objections. And I can't comment on other, on other cities.
In the interest of time, colleagues, may I suggest that we move to the pricing issues and then wrap up. To the extent that there are additional questions, we will follow up with a further engagement. Any questions then on dynamic or surge pricing?
I think it just one on my side, Mr. Hodge, and I think I did complain to you in the afternoon when we met about this dynamic pricing issue. The question that I have, there is just a, a clarity one. I mean, I'm trying to understand whether, you know, when there's this ability to vary these, you know, you know, these prices and this is what you refer to as dynamic pricing. You know, is there a mechanism where the rider, and I'm now thinking, you know, for the consumer, is there a mechanism where the rider is able to see? You know, I, I, is there a mechanism in terms of which, you know, the rider is informed about, you know, so that they are able to decide on whether or not they can take the service or not?
We're just gonna, it's this slide right near the beginning of this section, but I'm gonna ask Jonathan to, to address this, but it.
Hopefully we can get it up.
Yeah. Second slide after the.
So this, I think this, this shows it fairly clearly. Before a trip is booked, it will say, and I know it's very small on this one, but you've got the slides in front of you, it, it will say the fares are slightly higher due, due to increased demand. And it gives the exact price of the trip that you are going to request. And this is happening before the trip is booked. So there's, there's complete transparency. I think something we didn't speak to, but if, even if after the trip happens, there, there is an issue, there is a support mechanism that's available twenty four seven, that, that a rider can reach out to us and say, I had an issue with the fare, with the fare amount and we can address it then.
Okay. Just to, sorry, just to add, I mean, that's why I think there's maybe, as, as it's been explained to me, I mean, this technology improves all the time and the transparency improves. So some of maybe the dynamic pricing perceptions are built on the history.
Yes.
The old models, when the technology wasn't as sophisticated, but it's certainly a lot more sophisticated now.
Thank you Chair. I, I have no further questions.
Oh, you have no further questions?
No, thank you. At least this is the part that I enjoyed the most as, as, as an economist. I think I've, I've just maybe a couple of questions. I think the first one is, what was the rationale for, for dynamic pricing? I think you have gone at, at length to explain, you know, the efficiencies that come through, through, through with that. The only question that I still have is that, so is, is dynamic pricing within the Uber pricing model, right? So and you are only looking at your own partner drivers, right? So I'm, I'm thinking possibly you might have a few drivers or partner drivers in a particular area, but there might be lots for a competitor, right? I'm, 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 I'm not, I'm not sure. I, I think I, I just need your perspective because I think it's your model. You can speak for, for your own model. And, and I, I don't know whether there is some kind of any data or whatever that can influence because of an existence of competitor, you know, a driver that are within, within that vicinity. Because it might also, you know, is it, is it, is it dynamic within your own system or is it dynamic within a particular specified geographic area? So I think I just want to get your, your perspective. Yeah.
So I think, I think it's, it is with respect to our system in an area. So I think the, the example of another e-hailing operator is very similar to whether there is a train available or a bus available. Obviously, we can't see those, those things in our, in our app. But the behavior is something that will be, will be fed into the app. So for example, if all of a sudden riders decide to use.
So for example, if all of a sudden riders decide to use another e-hailing operator because there is more liquidity or there are more vehicles available on that, on that operator, on that platform, then the demand drops on the Uber system and supply comes down. Similarly, if everyone decides, hey, I'm actually gonna use the train to get home, demand would come down. And if, and if there wasn't availability on the train or on another platform, then, and everyone tried to use Uber, then demand would increase. But to, to answer your question, we can't see what, what is not happening on the app.
I just, I, I'm happy that Craig was attending the O E C D. I think you also saw in the, in the commission's own paper that we, we, we had a case against Uber that we reflected there. I think, I think there's, 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 there's one key question that normally arises with, with, from what the evidence that we have gotten so far is around, is because the pricing is done almost like at the back, back office through, through technology. And I think there, there, there is always a suspicion about what are the key components of that, of the, yeah, of that pricing, of that pricing policy? Maybe you can talk broadly around those issues without maybe disclosing mostly confidential information, but, but mostly broadly?
I think I can be, I can be, I mean, there's no secret to how we calculate our pricing. If you can go to, I think it's one of my first or second slides. It's, it's the grid of, of pricing by product. So I think while we show, I don't know if you guys can see, yeah. So while we show the, the actual fare that you're going to be charged, you're also able to see, if you click a little bit further, by product. So we have various products. For example, in Kaoteng, we have a larger van option or Uber Black, which is the luxury service, which is slightly more expensive. But you can see how we, how we make up that price. So if you look at the, that, that graph, you'll see the distance. And we'll use, we'll use the, the, the maps in the background. And I'm not an engineer, so I don't exactly how it's all calculated. But we'll estimate a time and a distance. And based on the rates per kilometer and for time, that is how that price is made up. So it's completely transparent, both in terms of what are you gonna pay in the end and also in how we calculate the fare.
No, thank, yeah, thank you. We're just putting some propositions from the submissions that we have received. So I think there is also submissions that we have received in relation to the promotions that, you know, Uber, Uber undertakes. And, and I think a few of those issues have been raised by the meter taxis, that the promotional activities, I think according to them, they're actually leading to almost some kind of a predatory pricing. So, so I think I, I, I don't know whether you have a, 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 just a view in terms of the promotional activities.
I'm not sure exactly. I'm, I'm not sure exactly which promotions are being referred to. But I think if we can get specifics, then we'd be happy to respond in writing.
Okay, yeah, it's almost like our hundred run off and for this time and the like. But I think we, we can, we can deal with it from outside, it's still fine.
Just, you know, ju- just one last issue with Mr. Hodge. I just want to understand where you dealt with the issue of area restrictions. The question there is, with reference to what you refer to as self-imposed ranking system, you know, that the meter taxi industry seems to have adopted. Are you suggesting that this is one of the reasons why traditional meter taxis, you know, might not be effectively competing with Uber?
Well, I think the, you know, the essence of the, the sort of Uber model is it achieves a high level of efficiency. So I think, and this in part goes to the previous question, but, you know, the initial suspicion is what's going on here? How can you be profitable at that price? But it's because you achieve this high utilization. And it's a classic economic situation of a large amount of your costs are fixed, the driver time, for the time they're, they're operating in the vehicle, although there are some variable costs of fuel and maintenance. And so the more you sweat that asset, to use the business term, you know, you can earn a decent living and still have low prices. And it's that virtuous cycle of bringing in more demand. Now, if you operate in a manner that in effect reduces your utilization, you know, you are inefficient and your costs are higher as a result, which means you do think they're predatory pricing because, you know, how can you meet it? But if you go past a train and see, you know, meter taxi sitting idle for hours, well, that's why, because they're not doing anything at the time. So that's the problem of the sort of self-imposed is, you say, I think as, as it was explained and more or less confirmed is, you know, if I take a passenger to, let's say, the train station here and that ranks around by another association and I'm chased away, well, I get no return trip. I don't pick up anyone nearby and I've got to come back to my rank areas. So it's an inefficiency that's pushing up costs. And as a result, if those drivers want to earn a decent wage, they've got to push price higher. But it's a vicious cycle, a negative cycle of high inefficiency and as a result, high cost and high prices that doesn't serve the consumers.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. I have no further questions, Chair.
Just one last question from my side to you, Mr. Hodge. If I heard you correctly, you said that this dynamic pricing or surge pricing kicks in during peak times, if I heard you correctly. Now, the, and you said it's the exception rather than the norm. The submission that we received from the city of Johannesburg was that actually within, within, within that city, the demand for public transportation, essentially it's a, it's a peak time demand in the city, essentially. And now I'm trying to reconcile that with, with what, with what your experiences as Uber are. Because the, the city of Johannesburg told us that essentially Johannesburg is a services, it's a services city. That's why the demand for public transportation is at peak times. So I'm trying to reconcile what the city of Johannesburg sees as demand patterns within the city. And what you say is an exception rather than, rather than the norm. I'm struggling to reconcile these two issues.
So, so, I mean, it's probably a terminology thing and that's where the problem maybe arises and the confusion. I mean, you're right, and I just put up the, the slide which shows the variations in demand for Uber in Johannesburg. And you do get the, the peak commute times, you know, in and out. I suppose what I was trying to say is, because of the flexibility of the Uber model, it's in fact, and, and the communication with the drivers about where to expect demand and when, so drivers naturally go out. Those peaks are, to use that term, accommodated within the normal flexibility of the Uber system and don't get subject to the dynamic pricing. It's when you get the exceptional spikes, like that Friday night sort of element, that you get that surge. Or the end of a, you know, as I used that example, the, the sundowns in Barcelona game where you might get a massive flood of people. So where Uber's actually been more effective than, let's take the airlines and let's take, you know, the train, is that in fact, they've been able to accommodate some of those normal peaks of the daily commute within their standard pricing system and limited the dynamic to a very small element of rides. If you looked at the train, probably you would find the majority of rides are at peak times. And if you look at the, the kind of capacity on the Johannesburg Durban route from an airline, most passengers are flying in that peak time. So in, in many respects, the flexibility of being able to bring capacity in and out is, is a benefit of the e-hailing, that people even in rush hour are getting standard fares. And maybe Jonathan can just.
No, I mean, I think you covered it. It's the flexibility that allows us to keep prices low for ninety-five percent of the time and, and only, only if it put dynamic pricing into effect for, for very, very short amount of time and at very, very low multiples relative to, to other, other costs, other transport costs. I think just one other point, and if you go back to one of my earlier slides on, on Uber movement, is I think this is information that we're really open to sharing with, with cities. And, and if they use that, if they, if they use that tool and it's available in Johannesburg, they're able to see through our data much more nuanced differences in supply and demand. It's, it's much more detailed than just a peak in the morning and a peak in the evening. There are peaks throughout the day. And, and that's, that data is available through our network to these regulators and decision-makers.
Thank you, thank you very much, gentlemen. I think what is pretty much clear is that we still have a lot of ground that we need to cover. So, Mr. Dingle, I think there will be a need for a further session. Because we do have additional questions and there are also some other issues that we couldn't converse in the time available, which have been raised by stakeholders. So if you are amenable to that, we will definitely make a request for, for a further engagement. But thank you very much for your time and for what is clearly a very detailed and comprehensive submission and for coming all the way from San Francisco. Thank you very much. Cape Town, thank you very much. I'm not sure where do you come from.
I came from Cape Town as well.
Oh, Cape Town. All right, no, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah. We will now take a very short break and then for five minutes and then take a submission from Taxi Fun.